Come to order, we now open this commission open for business. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff, and I would like to represent Dr. or present Dr. Brenton Cox with Manchester First Baptist Church for our invocation. If you would stand with me, please.
Thank you for the privilege of opening this meeting in prayer. Would you bow your heads with me, please? Father in heaven, thank you for the blessings of this day, for the air in our lungs right now, for the food we've eaten, for the clothes we wear. All these are good gifts of yours, and we humbly acknowledge and thank you for them. And Father, we thank you that we live in a community that values faith in the public arena and that desires to open a meeting like this with prayer. We acknowledge you. We bow before you. We humble ourselves before you, and we ask, Lord, that you would bless these commissioners in their deliberation and decisions tonight. We ask that you'd give them wisdom and prudence and discretion and guidance. These good gifts come from you, and we thank you for that, and we ask you to give them to them. Father, you say in your word in Romans 13 that civil authorities are your servants for doing good. And so we pray for these commissioners, that their decisions will be for the flourishing of the people of Coffee County tonight. We pray you'll keep them from any selfish motives, petty motives, keep them from any anger that is not righteous, for those are the tendencies of our heart, and guide them in their decisions. Father, finally, as we approach the birthday of our nation one week from today, we want to just pause and thank you for the heritage we have in America, for freedom, for the values that you've given us, and we pray that you would bless America, and we commit our future to you, and we offer this prayer in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Cox. Now, I'd like to ask Commissioner Hodge if you'll lead us in the pledge, please. Roll call. We have seventeen present. Let the record show. Number five on the agenda is we're going to approve tonight's agenda. If we could have a motion in a second. Before us, properly seconded, do we have any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Okay, we go with seventeen then. We're moving on a little bit. Next up is public comments, and we've always done this at every meeting. We'll continue to do it. We'll allow the next twenty minutes available for comments. Each person would be allowed two minutes, as long as it is germane to Coffee County and pertinent to business that we can do. We are instituting a sign-up sheet. This is the first time, so it's been a little choppy. The state comptroller has issued some new rules about public meetings, so it's just another way we can possibly keep up in our records that we are allowing public comments in addition to the minutes. We have several that have signed up, and I will call you in order, but anybody is still welcome to speak, as long as the timeframe remains. First up, we have Donna Tony, Register of Deeds. Please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
It's been a difficult week, hasn't it, since about Friday the 12th of June, or the 9th of June? Friday was on the 9th before the 13th. On the 9th of Friday was the first time I got to read the budget. And we're talking about this 2024 proposed budget for Coffee County. As we, I talk about as an official, began the budget cycle, we attended budget meetings, and the first one, it was stated there would be a 4% raise across the board for all employees. And maybe to expect, maybe, it might be possible there would be 2% plus in the fall, depending on the revenues coming in, if they might get an additional funds. Could end up being a total of 6%, 8%, it would depend on revenues. As the budget, I go through the budget, I clearly can see when you look at line 106 and you look at what the total is for 2024, there's inconsistencies in the raises. There are some exceptions to some, so keep that in mind, that I myself did not even know, to things that make that look that way. If they added new positions, then the percentage can look off. I do have the biggest concern as it has a 2.2 deficit. And I have to ask, and I may, I think there's few of you could tell me, what was the deficit for 2022, the ending budget then? Does anybody know what our deficit was, is it is expected to be for 2023, when we did the budget last year? Dwight, you have any idea?
I think 2022 was 25,000, and I think this year was...
Your two minutes is up, ma'am. Thank you. Mrs. Hazel Fannin will be next, please.
Did you just tell me I'm up?
Your two minutes is up. Yes, ma'am.
Can you give a warning? My name is Hazel Fannin, and I'm with Coffee County Humane Society, and we want to thank y'all for letting us apply for funds this year. This is the first time we've applied in about a decade. The reason is the huge mainly cat overpopulation in Coffee County. So far this year, we have spayed or neutered 185 cats and 70 dogs. Most of these are low-income family pets that are procreating constantly and colonies of stray cats. So the reason we're here this year is because vet costs have gone up so much. Our, we are a volunteer group, and our vet bills are sometimes as much as $8,000 to $10,000 a month. We don't have that kind of funding. We are doing our best to schedule as people apply, because if you delay, you get a litter, or two litters, or three litters. So that is why we're asking for a little bit of help from the county, and specifically, it would be for us to spay and neuter cats. We also just want you to know, we get calls every day from people asking us to come pick up cats and kittens, and we do not have a shelter. We cannot do it, and there's just not enough homes. So spay-neuter is the answer. So a little bit of money from the county would go a long way to solving this problem. I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on our list, public comment, we have Mr. John Marchesone, trustee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Last night, we had a work session, and several of the areas of concern were recognized, which include a $2 million budget proposal for the upcoming year. Also, the discrepancies in the pay, it was illustrated in the budget that there were payment compensation discrepancies. The proposals illustrate some employees are compensated only 4%, others are 8% or greater. Unfortunately, there were no explanations were provided last night for that. My concern regarding this proposal makes me question the direction of our future here in Coffee County. And there's some solutions. It's not the end of the world. We can go back to the table and look at the budget again, make the necessary corrections that need to be made for that, or we can borrow a tool from well-known Benjamin Franklin. If you wanted to, you could take out a piece of paper right now, write down a T, and then you could list the reasons on the left why we should pass the budget, and then you could list the reasons on the right why we shouldn't pass the budget. So just off the top of your head, what's some reasons that we should pass the budget tonight? Okay, thank you. Some reasons that we shouldn't pass the budget, $2 million deficit, number one. Number two is unfair compensation. Number three is responsibility to our taxpayers. Number four is responsibility to our employees. Before we make this decision tonight, let's weigh the pros and cons, and let's do what's best for Coffee County. Do I have any time left?
Fifteen seconds. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. And now we have Mr. Lamar Wilkie with VFW, please, sir.
Mayor Matheny, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, I'm Lamar Wilkie. I'm senior vice commander of both Manchester's VFW post 10904 and VFW Tennessee District 5, which covers 10 posts in this area, everywhere from Pulaski, Murfreesboro, McMinnville, Lewisburg, including our two posts here in Coffee County. On behalf of Commander Kimberly King and the 208 members of our post, we want to thank you for recognizing our achievement in receiving the VFW State of Tennessee Community Service Award for the second year in a row. We regret not having been here at the last meeting. Every member of VFW is a combat veteran. We served our country under some of the most arduous conditions, and now we serve our community because it's in our DNA. We're wired to serve, and not only do we serve, but we have fun doing it. When you have fun doing something, it's a passion, not a chore. And that's a major factor in the coveted All-State and All-American Post Awards. Last, our Manchester's VFW post broke state records when we earned our third consecutive All-American Post Award. Last year, we broke that record with an unprecedented fourth award. And barring any catastrophic events in the next couple of days, we will break our record again with an unprecedented fifth All-American Post Award and a sixth All-State Post Award. Do we have time for some more good news?
Yes, sir.
Tullahoma's VFW post, 4188, is set to receive its second consecutive All-American Post designation. In fact, Tennessee District 5 may go into the history books as the first VFW post or district with 10 posts, all met criteria for All-State and All-American Post designations. It's unprecedented, not just in Tennessee, but nationally, globally. That won't be official until midnight Friday, so please don't publish that yet. Thank you. We'll have a flurry of press releases and announcements coming out. We're planning a blowout celebration, 10 posts here in Manchester, September 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkie. Thank you very much. We're super proud of you, sir. Thank you. Always do a great job. Do we have any additional public comments? Yes, sir. If you'll hop up and state your name, and you have two minutes to address the commission, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Nicholas Northcutt. I have a family land surveying business, Northcutt and Associates, that's been in this county for 40 years. And the reason I'm speaking this evening is about the zoning resolution 2023 M-15 about removing the fire, the fire protection coverage from the setback requirements in the zoning resolution. Because of my profession, I'm in the unique position to see the impact of this language on everyday Coffee County citizens, and that's from everyday Joes to land developers. This setback requirement, in my opinion, is an undue burden on the people of Coffee County. You know, first and foremost, it doesn't work practically with the lot width requirements. So if you've got an acre in Coffee County and you've got water access, 125 feet is the minimum lot width that you can have. However, if you've got 50-foot side setbacks on both sides, you're only left with a 25-foot building envelope, which just makes it impractical. It also affects area for soils and septic placement, driveway placement, house size and placement. Also, the two water departments in the county, which would be Hillsville Utility District and West Warren Viola Utility District, both acknowledge that almost half of their lines do not meet Coffee County fire flow standards. And there are also multiple fire chiefs that agree that the 50-foot side setback is cumbersome and maybe more than what is needed. I think what's on the board is to remove just the fire flow language from that, and which would reduce it to 25-foot side setbacks, which puts us right in line with all the other surrounding counties.
Thank you, Mr. Northcutt.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
And we had a public hearing on this at 5:30, and it's on your agenda to vote on later tonight. Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comments? Seeing no more, we'll move on to number seven, review and approval of the minutes of the last meeting, which are in your attachment, and we'll entertain a motion in a second for that. Seventeen, thank you. We have approved last month's minutes. Next is resolutions of memorials, sympathy, proclamations, and commendations, and we have none tonight on the agenda. Next up is elections, appointments, and confirmations. First is the library board. First step there is Coffee County Manchester Public Library to place Amanda Fuller as a Manchester representative and Chrislyn Melson as the rural representative. We have a motion in a second. It's properly before us. Do we have any discussion on these appointments? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Resolution passes. Next is the Land and Memorial Library Board appointments of Aaron Wilson for Tullahoma, Rupa Blackwell for Tullahoma, and Linda Welty for the rural appointment for Tullahoma City. We entertain a motion in a second on those appointments. We have a motion in a second. It's properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Sixteen aye, thank you. Next, we'll move on to number 10, unfinished business. First is the Health Department construction status, and Commissioner Hunt and I have kind of been running shotgun with each other on that. And Commissioner, I found out a little bit since I spoke to you today, and really, I found out that we're still running in circles, sort of. The state is still reviewing its processes for selecting professional services, because there's federal funds involved in this, and our whole process of how the county uses professional services is being looked at by them to make sure it's proper, which we're all confident it is, but they've not given us the green light yet on actually fully engaging the architect. So we're still waiting for that. Ernst &amp; Young is doing it, and they are prepared to, I think they're going to send some representatives down to the County Mayor's Association meeting in August to talk about this. So Health Department is considerably delayed. Do we have any other comments on the Health Department construction? Thank you. Oh, I will say that TDOT's planning, they were planning, and as far as we know, they're still planning to start their construction around that intersection sometime in July. So we're going to probably have to do some things as a county to improve parking there at the Tullahoma facility for probably a longer period than we thought about. So we'll take that to Capitol Outlay, and eventually it'll work its way here, so that's what we know now. Next will be committee vacancy appointments, which we have none. Grant update, the only grant that we have is the Three Star Program, which is a recurring grant that we have. We kind of had a brainstorming session here about three months ago, and the vast majority of us decided to work on creating a CEO program in the schools, creating educational opportunities, which is pairing business and industry up with schools. We've already started pairing that process up. I know CFC, and they have some representatives here tonight. They're going to help us with Hickerson Station. And the Elections Division is going to hold elections at the high school for their student body, and they're going to fully code the machines and run it as a normal election. Some of that grant money will go to help them professionally code those machines and do professional elections. And so, and I met with about a dozen plant managers last Thursday, and I believe we'll get every school sponsored for some additional extracurricular activities. So that's what that grant we're working on. Do we have any questions about the Three Star Grant? It's $50,000. We get it every year, and of course, it will be approved, how we spend it, by this commission, but that's what we applied for. Judicial Commissioner appointments is D, and we have one, Charles Glenn Kimbrel. This commission, myself and the judicial commissioners interview individuals, and we recommend them to the law enforcement committee, and then they're recommended then to the full commission for hiring. So it's not, it's not, he will be a paid employee full-time there, and his name is Charles Glenn Kimbrel. And we have a motion in a second, so do we have any discussion on his appointment to the, as a judicial commissioner? That should have us fully staffed there. Seeing no discussion, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, vote no. Seventeen ayes, thank you. We move on to new business, number 11, A, Personnel Manual Approvals. You have all the attachments in with you. Chairman Hirschman, if you'd like to speak to any of them as we go through them, I'll keep it extra on you, but we'll vote on each one. And the first is a receipt for a copy of the county's personnel manual. This is all part of our updating process, of updating our manual, our hiring processes, access and ability to additional training and education for employees, things we're working on. So receipt for the county, the copy of the county personnel manual. Do we have a motion in a second to approve that personnel change? It's before us and properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, vote no. Thank you, ma'am. Motion carries. Next is County Officials Training Program. That is some CTS updates that are being implemented into our processes, is my understanding. We have, entertain a motion in a second on those. It's before us and properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. 11 III is our new, our hiring policy, and it's a new process individuals will go through for employment with the county. Entertain a motion in a second on this. It's before us and properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Thank you. 11B, our budget amendments, budget approvals. The first one is Budget Amendment 141-2023-08. We'll entertain a motion in a second for this amendment. Issues before us and properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Budget Amendment 101-2023-22. Have a motion? Do we have a second? It's before us. We have a motion. It's properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Thank you. BII is Budget Amendment number 171-2023-23. And we need a motion and a second to discuss. Motion in a second. It's properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Next is B4, Budget Amendment number 118-2023-24. Have a motion in a second. It's properly before us. All those, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Thank you, ma'am. Next is B5, Budget Amendment 101-2023-25. Have a motion? It's properly seconded. Issues properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Thank you. Motion carries. Next is 11C, which is the fiscal year 2024 budget. It's Resolution 2023-M-06. It's the Budget Appropriations Resolution. And make just a few comments. I'm going to keep everybody, anybody that wants to speak on this issue, we're going to make sure everybody gets to speak. I do want to make sure everybody's recognized in order to speak. I'm keeping a list. Our rules are that everybody gets to speak at least once before somebody speaks twice on the issue. And our parliamentarian will be here to help us through any amendments or any changes or anything, and we'll get through it just fine. So we have a motion and a second on the resolution. It's properly before us, and we're open. Anybody have any discussion? Yes, sir. Commissioner Morris.
There's been a lot of angst about the amount of pay raises. Everybody's getting 4%, but some are getting more. I understand those are adjustments, but they weren't explained to a lot of people. So I would move that we pass an amendment that everybody gets 4% across the board, and the adjustments for other people's pay be looked at after one July by the Budget and Finance Committee and brought back before the commission.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the budget to basically...
Point of order, could he please punch the amend button on your device? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Hunt. We are, we are on an amendment. We have a, it's a motion on amendment. Do we have a second on the amendment? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Claudia, it should be your motion. There you go. Now a second, please. It's before us, properly seconded. The amendment, make sure I'm correct, is to basically go back to the same page... The amendment, make sure I'm correct, is to basically go back to the same pay rates that we're having currently before any adjustments that were made this fiscal year. Go back to baseline, everybody up 4% and revisit in 30 days or so, or sometime in July. That's the motion before us, it's properly seconded, do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Chairman Morris.
Can I put this thing down and just talk about your amendment?
If, at least get it where the recording can get it, this is-
I spent some time today talking with the finance director and stuff and there were things that we, I didn't understand that it happened to take care of problems that we had encountered as a county. And I'm going to use the sheriff as an example. He was going to have many, many people walk out on him at the jail because the jailers were not getting paid enough money.
That's correct.
And they were going to leave and put us in jeopardy of getting down to the staffing shortages to where we have to ship people off. And he came before Budget and Finance and they saw to raise their pay, the jailers' pay, up so he can keep, he can keep those people. Okay, during the budget process, he was happy where they were at because it put them above his road deputies right now, which that should be a promotion for a jailer. They should come out of the jail to the road and make more money. So we've made a discrepancy there to where he didn't ask for the 4% for the jailer. So I don't know if I can make it a friendly amendment to your amendment or not, I don't know if that's legal or not, but I would like to leave them out because you're increasing them and we've made a discrepancy of they make more than the deputies did, do now, and we would continue that process to where I would not want to come out of the jail and go to the road because you're going to take money from me on that one. Also during the time, our finance director was approached and offered another job of quite substantial raise. And we, the Budget and Finance, this county government body, worked with her and came up with an agreement that we agreed to, and I think she agreed to, a salary that she would stay. And she has been here longer than I have. This is my second go-around. But to lose that knowledge that she has will take a two years to reinvest in somebody. So to me, it was a good business decision by Budget and Finance or the mayor, whoever did it, to meet her needs and it's lower than what she was offered. So those are two things I'd like to throw out there as an amendment to y'all. It would, and I'm not bashing the jailers at all. They got their raise and they will the next time around. But it makes equity in the sheriff's department to where there's no yin-yan back and forth and there is a progression of moving forward. It's, it's a promotion to come out of the jail to a road deputy and it should carry weight on the salary side. And then hers is, when you look at it, is a drop in the bucket. I know people are doing everything, back and forth and figuring out percentages. But when you lose somebody with knowledge like in the school system, when an older teacher leaves, there's a huge vacuum that's hard to fill. And I would say it would probably take somebody two years to fill that position, to figure out what else going on. Because we have stuff going on that the Health Department's doing, we have plans going on that she runs, and she's probably underpaid too. Everybody's underpaid in this county. We, we all know that, that's why some people leave us. They can go someplace else and figure that out. Now, I don't know where that puts us as a deficit on funding, it's not going to cut your money down. I'm just going to throw this out there because I talked about it today. If you don't want to go and vote, if you want to vote no on this right here and send it back to Budget and Finance, we need to at least fix the problems with our employees. They need to come across with a raise because if we send it back now without doing anything for our employees, they're going to miss at least one month of their bonus, not their bonus, their raises. So if you don't like this proposal with the, and I don't, and I don't know what the money is, but you can revert back, because she and I spent quite a bit of time today, you can revert back to last year's budget with the 4% for everybody across the board except for the jailers, plus her money. Pass that tonight, our employees get their raises, their 4%, starting in July. They would not lose anything. Then Budget and Finance can go back and we can all go, and I'm one who didn't go, that's on me, and hash this out or talk this out instead of it being yin-yan back and forth because they are important people, they're the face of Coffee County Government, they are the people who see us, they represent us. So that's my-
Thank you. The parliamentarian has said he needs to address something real quick, please.
Mr. Morris, on making that a friendly amendment, it would require Mr. Morris and Mr. Duncan both to agree to that. If they do not agree, then you'd have to get a second and it'd have to be another amendment. So if Mr. Claude Morris and Mr. Johnny Duncan, y'all would have to agree with adding that to y'all's amendment.
Thank you. Do we, does the sponsor of the motion and the second agree to the friendly, terms of the friendly amendment? I have just, let me, just, Chairman Morris, you're next. And then I've got Chairman Stubblefield and then Chairman Hunt. Go ahead Chairman Morris.
I, I guess I agree, we did give the jailers a big raise during the summer. I think all other raises ought to be readdressed by the Budget and Finance Committee after one July. Pay adjustments, I guess, rather than raise it.
So to be clear, are you not agreeing to the friendly amendment? Are you not agreeing to the friendly amendment that Chairman Morris presented?
Part of it.
Yeah. So it's not a friendly amendment then? And so we, we need, I guess you need a second on your amendment, sir, to the amendment. We have a second on amendment to the amendment by Chairman Hobbs. Okay, so that is properly before us, do we have any additional discussion? We do. Chairman Stubblefield, it's on the list.
Okay, I guess what I was going to say is, two weeks ago, we, the sheriff, well, we approached sheriff with that problem, with that 4%. And Budget and Finance, we settled that two weeks ago and it, I think it reflects in this budget, you might correct me if I'm wrong sheriff, but, but it reflects in that budget, you know, our corrections and we talked about that 4% and what was going to be done with it. So I think if we elected a budget as is tonight, he's, he's fine. Now, as far as the individuals you're talking about, you know, their bump in their raise other than the 4%, you know, that's being done to be competitive with surrounding counties and cities to keep, you know, key employees with us. And, you know, I guess you'll just have to vote your conscience on how you feel about that, but that's the reasoning for that. Like you said Tim, we don't, we don't want to lose them, so.
Thank you Chairman Stubblefield. Chairman Hunt, you're recognized.
To clarify, right at the moment, we're in discussion regarding an amendment to the amendment.
That is correct.
Which is not being recorded electronically, by the way. Is that correct? Mr. Chairman Morris, did you punch your amend button to amend the amendment?
I would really like to see us back up and just discuss what people want-
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Thank you. The, I would like to ask regarding your amendment to the amendment, I would like to ask the sheriff to speak to the exclusion from him, the exclusion from his department from Chairman Morris's amendment to do 4% across the board. I would like for the sheriff to speak to that. Will he suffer with the 4% amendment as proposed by Chairman Morris? Or will the amendment to the amendment, which excludes the sheriff, be okay? Which one does he prefer? If it, I'm appealing to the chair to let the sheriff speak to this briefly.
Yes sir, and without objection, I would like to go into recess to allow the sheriff to speak. I think that would be proper, brief recess, without objection. Sheriff, you're recognized. Sheriff Parton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess to start, since you're bringing this up, in October of last year, I came before Budget and Finance in a special called Emergency Budget and Finance Committee Meeting and explained to the committee the situation we were in with corrections at the jail. Now take in mind, we had had several new sheriffs elected in the surrounding counties. With the new sheriffs elected in some of the surrounding counties, there was a seeking of them recruiting from several jails in these counties and unfortunately, we were one of them. That's something to be commended, that somebody, another sheriff was wanting our trained people. If, if nobody's wanting our people, then I think that's a sad reflection, but I'm honored that they do want our people. At that time, we had several that were going to vacate. Command staff came to me one morning and said, Sheriff, we've, we've got this problem, we're fixing to be in trouble. When we don't have the right numbers of staff at the jail, the state comes in and semi-shuts us down. They will remove inmates and they will transfer them to other jails at your expense. In other words, that could be anywhere from $50 a day per inmate to $150 a day per inmate owing to what those respective counties who might accidentally have free beds to house. I came to Budget and Finance with a surrounding county study and that was all the counties that touch Coffee County. That study was done off of jail population size and also the pay. We are the second largest corrections facility in all the counties that touch us. In other words, we have the second largest facility. The largest facility that touches us is Rutherford County. I suggested that to be fair, that we should have the pay just underneath Rutherford County and just above Warren County. We have 400 beds, Warren County has 200 and something. Rutherford County has 1,100 beds, they are a big facility. We were at starting pay for corrections last October at 1222 an hour, hiring in, 1222 an hour. It was decided that 1820 an hour was the correct pay for a beginning corrections officer at the Coffee County Sheriff's Department. Now, I knew and I accept that that pay is just above a hired-in basic patrolman for the sheriff's office. Their beginning pay is 1779 an hour. Yes, there has been some corrections officers that have come out to the road that's had to have pay adjustments to properly fit the position. I knew going into this budget that more than likely, this commission, who's always been pro-law enforcement, would come up with something. And the deal I made in October with Budget and Finance is that I would not ask for any pay raises for the 65 jail positions. That is the ground I stood on. I came to a Budget and Finance meeting three meetings ago and come to find out, the mayor, the chairman and the board, and I think maybe the budget director, had been working on the budget and had already figured an additional 4% to the 65 corrections positions. And again, restated my promise, I did not ask for that money. That comes out to be a little over $97,000. Well, me being the negotiator that I am, and I saw that our good finance people here and our mayor had figured that into the current budget and out of the coffers, I opened, they opened the door and I stepped in. And my step in was, hey, if you want to redirect that money, I, if you want to give it, we'll take it. If you want to give it, I'll take it, I will not turn it away. I felt at that time, we must be in good shape. I still feel that we're in great shape. That $97,000 was stated to me, take the money and spread it to your deputies, your post-certified deputies. I based that off my competitors, which is the city of Tullahoma and the city of Manchester, I cannot compete with the highway patrol. My two closest competitors is the city, the city had just gotten a 10% raise. Coming July 1, a starting Manchester city officer will start out with zero experience at $21.80 an hour. With this additional $97,000, I'm still in a very long arm's reach. It will be 1920 an hour with the 4% with the additional $97,000 that was accredited for the jail and spread out over 52 to 54 positions. I'm still $2.60 an hour, which is equivalent to $5,400 a year to a young, starting-out law enforcement officer. Yes, I got summoned back to another Budget and Finance meeting last Tuesday night and I apologize to the commissioners for my attitude. I'm very passionate about my employees. I'm very passionate, everybody knows and heard my speeches, I'm very passionate about all the county employees. You've got one county employee sitting here on this commission that has worked and stayed loyal to this county for 30 years as a law enforcement officer. He is a rarity. I don't feel that my department is any better or, or than anybody else, than the registered deeds, the trustees, the clerks, offices, I do not. But to ask a man and woman to go out here and put their life on the line, to get shot at, to get spit on, yes, I'm going to say some things about our priorities. I care about animal control. I care about the Humane Society. I care about the judicial commissioners. I care about everybody in this room. But I have got a lot of green and inexperienced deputy sheriffs, they're in the darkness of the night in this rural county and mean people out here today and we're asking them to come to work for us at $19.20. That is if this budget passes at a hole. I get about deficits. I get it. I'm worried about it too. But I know the growth and if any of you get out and ride, we've got growth. Yes, that 2.1 million number is scary. We've been dealing with 1 and 1.2 for several years. Commissioner Miller and former Commissioner Bobby Bryan has worked with me for the past several years and we've, we've worked and hashed things out. I'm here tonight to work and hash things out with each and every one of you and want to do what's the right thing. I want to do what's right for all the county employees. I don't want any division between any elected officials. We all have to state our cases. We all have to state our cases for our dispatchers, our paramedics, our deputy sheriffs, our clerks and everyone. I'm just trying to stay within sight. Some of us remember the days where this general fund didn't have money to cover the paychecks for some of us and we would get told, you can't cash your check till 2 o'clock on Friday. I remember those days very well. We have done very well. Our budget, our general fund has grown, our investments have grown, there's been a lot of good investments, but we've got a lot of stuff coming. We're going to have to talk about schools, we're going to have to talk about housing and all the infrastructure, infrastructure that comes along with that. I, when I took office, I'm not trying to boast, I've got positions set aside for this county that I hope will help the growth in the next 10 years. I've not come here to ask you for any additional positions, ever. I've got positions, I've got positions I can't fill. It helps cover the budget, yes. That money gets returned and it has helped your general fund deficit. We will probably do that again. We've got new money coming that's not on this agenda, it'll be on next month's agenda, I hope. We have done a lot of great things and we want to continue to do it, but we're, we're talking about $97,000. I'm looking at doing something for this general fund next month, once the school board meets, we're going to get some serious additional money. I think our deficit is not- I think our deficit is not as far off as we think, if our budget director in this recess wants to explain some things, or if anybody else wants to work on it. I think we've had some funds come in, and I actually think that our deficit is more like what it was last year than it is right now. And I don't want none of us to butt heads, and I don't want us to be angry and say bad things, but we're each passionate. You're doing, each one of you are doing a fine job, and I commend you for the, for scratching. I commend John and Donna for scratching for their people, but I'm scratching for mine, too. I'm scratching to hold on to them. And as far as getting down to the nuts and bolts of this, I'm going, I'm at the mercy of this board. I feel like that me and my team has brought a lot to this commission, we've brought a lot to the coffers. There's a lot of things that myself and my staff do outside of this department to do fundraising, to support the equipment funds that we have to do, and that's several hundred thousand dollars a year that we do that you do not pay for. And we're going to continue to do that. There's a lot of things that we support and pay for that does not run through the books, so to speak, in the general fund. I'm not saying it's policing for profit, I don't believe in that, but we get creative. And as long as the federal government lets us use that creativity, that's what we're going to do it. We've gotten good audits. It is amazing at the audits that we've had, I know, in the last five years. Folks, I deal with 94 other sheriffs, and I hear the war stories. The mayor has just gotten oriented with the other 94 mayors and listened to the audits that they have. We are doing a fine job. We are a great team, and we need to keep pulling together. And I feel tonight, I feel very confident, I feel very confident, if you didn't make any amendments, any amendments, that we're going to wash this 2.1 deficit out by next spring. We've done it for the last several years. Now, is it right? No, I agree, it is worrisome. That two, that number two is scary. One doesn't hurt as bad. Two hurts. I would really like to hold on, I would really like to get within a nickel and a dime an hour of my competitors like I was two years ago, but they seem to keep coming up with more revenues and more stuff. How they do it, I don't know. I'm just trying to stay within sight. I will leave you with this. I haven't even mentioned the City of Telahoma. They're fixing to get a large increase in their pay study. The chief of police down there is going to be looking for seven people to fill schools for SROs. I've got your positions filled. You know what they're coming, they're already calling my people. And my people are sitting, watching that camera tonight, listening to me speak, and they're going to watch you vote, and it's going to determine what they're going to do come July 1. And I'm afraid I'm going to lose some deputies to Telahoma to go work in those schools, because they're going to start out at what, Commissioner Watkins?
49,000 a year.
49,000 a year. That's what's going to happen. If it does, I'm going to deal with it. We're going to scratch, and we're going to dig, and we're going to keep going. We're going to do the best we can do. I respectfully ask that you pass the sheriff's portion of this budget as it stands. I know we need to make sure that that money from October is in good standing. If you decide to vote without the additional 97, that I'm going, it's $1,000 and some odd dollars to spread around, I will respect that vote. If we want to continue to go through this budget, and anybody has any questions on any line item, I'm happy at this point in time, I will be here till the sun comes up to explain this to each and every one of you and the people in this audience and the citizens listening. I want you to have faith and confidence in your sheriff's office and its ability to manage its money. And I feel like we have done a above-board job in managing our money, because we've not come back in here looking for additional monies and operating expenses. We have only come to you to beg and plead to take care of our employees. That's the only thing we've asked. That's it. I hate to take up this much space, but it's hard for us to all get together and talk about this, and I will answer any questions.
That will continue to be in recess, and do we have any questions for the sheriff? Does the, while we're in recess, does the commission have any objection to me making some comments? I'd just like to say that when we all sat down and interviewed last August, there were several priorities that 17 of 18 of you had identically, and that was to increase employees' pay and benefits, to prepare for and absorb this growth the best that we absolutely can, and to make sure there was decorum and a better atmosphere within these buildings and these halls and these operations. And I believe this budget takes us a long way to solving those payroll problems. This is not a socialist county, I don't believe, and given everybody the same thing all the time, there's some people that we need to make adjustments for that were abysmally low. And some of these commissioners came to me and asked me to make those adjustments, and we did. And we did everything in concert with the budget director and the Budget and Finance Committee. So, I am for whatever this commission decides, believe me. We are very fortunate, as everyone said, this is not a fire sale. We're not trying to rob Peter to pay Paul. We have a lot of options, and we are a heavy-growing county. Our revenue projections, I believe, are very conservative. The recurring revenue that is coming in from the sheriff's office and SRO program will help us substantially. We have a sheriff that has been proactive for five years and built an SRO program before it was mandatory. So you've already been funded about 70% of it. He's going to relinquish some of his money back to us in the general fund, and it is substantial, year one, and even more substantial year two, and it is recurring. He has to hire a few more SROs, and he needs to update their equipment. That's not going to take his full amount. And we all have faith and confidence in the sheriff and his ability to keep his word, barring anything totally unforeseen. Those would be rules that the federal or state government made to inhibit that money further. But right now, we included that to offset this deficit. I believe the budget director can attest that there's additional monies that have come into our funds, and I believe our growth is conservative at 2.5%. And it's, we have, what, 3,000 houses under construction here, we have a mega site that I promise you is going to be under construction, probably this time next year of some way, you're going to see a lot going on there. Guys, that's 4,000 to 6,000 jobs coming. This county is blossoming, cost of living's gone up 11% just in inflation. So, this budget is an attempt to close those gaps and make those things whole as possible. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. Do some people maybe get more than others this year? Yes, they do. Are we incrementally bringing some of our department heads up? Yes. Mariana would be impossible to replace, Commissioner Morris is absolutely right. I don't think two years would do it. The intimate knowledge that she has of this county, our maintenance director, our codes director, these folks could go anywhere and make $20,000 or $30,000 more today. And I'm telling you, they are impeccable workers. So, think about all those things, and think about what you told me back in August, that employee pay and benefits in this prospering county need to be heavily weighed upon. And keep in mind, there's not been a single thing done, it hasn't been done in concert with the budget committee, the finance director, it started in February of this year. It's all been laid out. Like I said, though, I'm at the pleasure of this commission. We can go out of recess in a moment. We know the posture that we're in, we have an amendment to an amendment. Of course, it was a friendly amendment, so we didn't have an official motion, we can work through that. And we have an amendment to the budget, and we've written everything down, and we'll go over it piece by piece before we vote on it, and then we'll get this done, and we'll move on. And it's just that simple. We're going to work. So that's all I have to say, and if we have any other discussion, that's fine, if not, we'll come back into session.
Mr. Pedigee?
Commissioner Morris.
Could we both remove, withdraw our amendments and just talk about the budget before anything's thrown out?
Yes. Mr. Parliamentarian?
Mr. Morris, you and the person who seconded your motion can agree to withdraw your amendment, and that will have no effect upon Mr. Morris and Mr. Duncan's amendment.
They would have to physically say they withdrew theirs also, so it has to be in I have, do we have, we still in recess, yes, sir. Yes, asked in that, and then I think we probably need to go back into session.
Can I ask y'all to rescind your amendment also, to where we can talk about this, because we sort of jumped the gun, I think both of us did, trying to fix something. I think everybody can talk about the budget as it states right now, and then if that doesn't go, then you can make an amendment to the budget.
A question on the rules of order. If we do that, can we reintroduce, can I reintroduce this amendment later?
Sure you can, absolutely. This will be a fair board, everything. Like I said, we're going to go, everybody's going to get a chance to do what they need to do. So, I will commit to you, if you withdraw your amendment and choose to put it back on in proper order, we will absolutely do it. That being said, let's come back into session. Let's be official. The posture we're in is Commissioner Morris and Commissioner...
I make the motion to remove my friendly amendment to Mr. Claude Morris's.
Commissioner Hobbs walked out, did he need to second it?
Yeah. He just needs to agree to it.
Sheriff, if not, notify, somebody notify Mr. Hobbs.
And...
Just go on the restroom, okay.
Mr. Morris, you're not making another motion, you're just asking to withdraw yours.
Yes, sir, I'm asking to withdraw my friendly amendment, so we can all discuss the budget before anything happens.
Posture we're in, Commissioner Hobbs, when you take your seat, we have Commissioner Morris asked to withdraw his amendment, his friendly amendment. You would need to second that withdrawal in order for Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Duncan to address their amendment. Okay, so the posture we're in, the motion and the second has been withdrawn. Now Commissioner Morris, we're on your amendment that is seconded by Commissioner Duncan.
I will withdraw that for now, as long as I can reintroduce it if necessary.
Yes, sir, we'll make sure it's done properly.
I withdraw my second.
Thank you, sir. So the motion and the second is withdrawn, so we're back on the 2024 budget resolution for discussion as it sits. And I have a list, if anybody would like to continue to speak. Yes, sir, Commissioner Hobbs.
So, my whole issue is not employee pay. I've served one other term, and I have always been for paying the employees. My issue is that one of the meetings in Budget and Finance, you laid out a plan. You sold me on the plan of 4% across the board, and that we would look at it mid-year. There are some adjustments needed, but in this specific budget, there's more departments with more than 4% than there are with departments who stayed at 4%. That's the underlying issue. It's not about money, and it's not about what each person makes, it's about the plan we have to fix it.
Understood. Do we have any additional comments? No additional comments on the budget, we're prepared to vote. Commissioner Morris.
I'd like to reintroduce the amendment that we make at 4% across the board.
Okay. It's properly before us with a motion, do we have a second? Mr. Duncan, second, it is second, so the motion is before us and properly second, is open for discussion, Commissioner Morris.
Does that leave everything else the same? The other spending, everything else is the same?
Commissioner Morris, will you please restate your motion?
I move that we give a 4% raise across the board for all county employees. Anything above that to adjust pay can be addressed after 1 July on an individual basis by the Budget and Finance Committee and brought before the commission.
Motion is to...
Okay.
Give a 4% raise across the board, and future pay raises and employee compensation will be handled by Budget and Finance Committee.
Now, are you adding that back to last year's budget or to this year's budget? Because you're saying things are going to be worked out in July, if we pass this budget, everything in here flies.
What we worked at it for 1 July is pay adjustments for those folks that need pay 4% would be based on last year's numbers, yes.
4% based on last year's number is the amendment. That straight, just go to last year's numbers and come up 4%. Does that include, though, does that, just to be sure, does that include the adjustment we gave to the jailers in October?
Yeah, as amended, budget as amended.
Budget as amended, then go down to 4% for everybody across the board. That is motion, and it's properly seconded. Do we have any other discussion? Commissioner Hunt?
I yield to Commissioner Watkins, because he has not spoke.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Watkins.
Commissioner Morris, does that include the funding for the corrections officers as was done in October to their current salary rate?
That'd be correct, because that's an amended budget, amended budget for last year. Amended and approved, yes.
I would like to just address the finance director very quickly, just to get her comment on what we're talking about, if she has any on this amendment. Would you please, don't mind, thank you.
So are we going to take what they currently make and put 4% on top of that, or no? I'm kind of confused.
We would go back to the, basically, the budget we had in 2023, add the correction that we did for the jailers in October, then we would add 4%...
Okay.
...across the board.
Is that what you're saying? Okay.
And if, yeah, that's it. And then we're just...
And then the deputies only four? The deputies would only be four?
Yes, deputies just get four, everybody gets four.
Right. The deputies would only be four?
Everybody gets four, except the jailers?
Well, we give the sheriff 4%.
Yeah.
Well, they're in different categories, so I need to know how to do that with the budget. Okay.
Okay, I still have a question. Are we going with last year's budget and adding 4% to it?
To what? Let's go into recess without objection till we get... Okay. Yeah, let's go back, let's make this very clear. Let's finish him, I'll be, I'll be right to you. We're not going on recess, I just thought they would, needed to continue to talk. I just want to let, okay, we're still on you, Commissioner Morris, and your question of clarification.
Yes. Are you regarding that we go back to 2020, 2023 budget and give 4% to the employees and 4% to the jailers, right?
Correct, the budget as amended with raises that were given during the year.
Not this budget. Not the new budget.
Not four on top of it, but the 4% across the board, yeah, for every county employee.
I believe, to be clear, he's saying the budget before us is gone, and we'll look at the 22, 23 budget flat.
Okay.
We'll add 4% to the jailers, that's already been there, that's there. Then we add our 4% across the board. Does that, my question is, does that exclude the jailers or not?
That's not...
Go ahead. I recognize the sheriff, yes.
Okay, it's a clarity, so, so that we don't get construed with where we're already at, the October money is, you're, the constituents are good with that, and you're wanting to add the 4% on top of that and just go straight across? Okay, that's the 97,000 I spoke of. Okay, all right, so are we clear on that? So it's... Oh, absolutely, yes, and that puts us back to what we originally, that's, yes, I'm good with that. So the October's there...
So your corrections officers are going to make more than your deputies, is that correct?
No, they're giving us the leeway to allocate the money as needed.
We need to make sure that's stated that way.
They're just doing the 4% across for clarity.
Okay, but we need to make sure it's stated that you can move that money.
Well, that's kind of in the law.
Then I would like to make one friendly amendment, because we didn't take care of the person that we talked about. We need to move, and I don't know where from, the money to raise the Mariana salary to what that was agreed to by Budget and Finance, that's my friendly amendment to it.
I would say we make that a second amendment after we...
He has an amendment, your amendment first, and we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, on Commissioner Morris's amendment to add Mariana's salary adjustment as in the 23, 24 budget to this amendment, which zeros out all the pay raises except hers, and then gives 4% across the board. That's, okay, that's the amendment for us, and it's a friendly amendment, is it accepted by... That's, okay, that's the amendment for us, and it's a friendly amendment, is it accepted by Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Duncan? The friendly amendment? It is accepted? Yes, sir, okay, so the friendly amendment's accepted, we're back on the amendment to the budget. And as I've, I've stated, do we have any additional discussion? Chairman Watkins?
I'm still waiting to speak.
Yes, sir, Chairman Hunt.
Okay, I want to clarify, this amendment, Commissioner Morris, is to achieve parity, not reduce the deficit, is that correct? I'm just wondering, is this going to reduce the 2.2 by doing the across the board? If so, how much?
Mariana, you're recognized, ma'am. Okay, if you'll just make sure you speak in your microphone, please, we have plenty of time, so just take your time. How about we go into a five-minute, 10, let's say a 10-minute recess, let her consolidate the numbers? Oh, she hasn't, then I rescind the recess. We all need to go, but if she's got it, let's go.
Okay, um...
Let's wait.
It ends up adding back to the fund balance.
If you'll hang on just a minute, ma'am, till we get, okay, now we're going, go ahead.
Okay. $187,000. So our projected fund balance is 8,400,759, which makes that a deficit of 1,921,158. Yes. It reduces about 100...
280,000 reduction.
Which total?
So the difference, excuse me, we're still, uh... On the motion, any additional discussion on Mariana?
Her answer to my question was 200...
Reduces it 280,000, the deficit.
280,000 dollar reduction in the 2.2 deficit, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
That difference is the adjustments within various departments and things, mostly. Okay, but now we have the amendments properly before us, and we know what the impact is for the most part on the budget, do we have any additional discussion before we vote on this amendment? This is not the budget, yes, this is the amendment. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Reed. Okay, I'm gonna try to get it right. We're voting to basically strip the budget you have before you back to the 2022, 2023 budget. In October, we added several hundred thousand dollars to the jailer budget that we did through a budget amendment, so it's in the budget already, so we're considering that the budget of 2022, 2023. We take those numbers, we add the salary increase for Ms. Edinger, and we add 4% across the board for everybody. Does that sound like your motion, Commissioner Morris? Okay. We had, anybody else like to speak, Commissioner Brown?
So the money for the maintenance director and the codes and the people making $10 an hour is going to go back?
That's correct, yes, sir. That is correct. That is correct too, yes, sir. Do we have any additional discussion on the amendment? Yes, ma'am. Mr. Smith.
I am not clear on what we're voting, I mean, are we're going to vote on an amendment, and then we're going to vote on the budget tonight?
That's the plan, yes, ma'am. We can choose not to vote on the budget, or we can vote it down, but that is the procedure we're following right now.
Okay.
Have any additional discussion? Yes, sir.
I think the state on about rolling back the budget to 23 is not going to be accurate in the fact that you're just talking about...
Would you try to get in your mic, please, we can, so, thank you.
I think what we're talking about is really just pay, not rolling back the budget to 23, because there's other things in there.
We need to make sure that motion's clear, that it is just the payroll and not operations.
That's why I want to clear it up.
Okay, so that, we would need a friendly amendment to his amendment to make sure this is only to do with payroll.
What I would really like to see us do, I think there's enough confusion now, is to not vote this budget through today. Nobody has to lose pay, it can be retroced when we work this thing out.
Okay, that's, do you want to make that a motion?
I would like to make that a motion.
Okay, um... Would you make a motion to postpone, is that?
Yes, primarily, that's the most...
That would supersede the amendment that Chairman Morris and Chairman Duncan are sponsoring, so we need a second on your motion to postpone the budget. And we need a time certain, July 11th is our next stated meeting. We need a time from you and your amendment when we...
That's fine.
Okay, so the amendment is to postpone the entire budget until July 11th. What that will do, just so you know, and Mariana, if you'll please correct me, we shouldn't be in any kind of default or anything, we would automatically go back to the 2022, 23 budget anyway on July 1st if we don't pass it tonight. So the amendment, nobody, it would be stripped completely back to where we were. That could, so we do need to make sure that, what is that going to do to capital projects and everything after July 1st if we don't have a budget? If you'll recognize that in your mic, please, ma'am, microphone. Is that going to put us in a bind?
Well, it will, I already have invoices for...
I couldn't hear you, ma'am.
Uh, I have capital projects that are ongoing that, you know, the budget is in there for capital projects so we can move forward.
Well, we just have to deal with the fallout of the amendment, so we have a, we have an amendment, it's properly seconded, do we have any additional discussion? Thank you. Parliamentarian said that if we pass this motion on July 11th, we'll be right back exactly where we are tonight on July 11th, because we're postponing it till then, just to be clear.
Well, my thinking is, a lot of things were said by word of mouth, and in my case, I heard the 4%, and I thought, I thought, well, that's going to be good. I did not hear the 2.2 deficit, so that was a big factor for me. And then we've had all this discussion, I think we can iron out all this, and we can have another caucus meeting like we did last night and settle this thing up.
Do what? We, that's, well, we have an amendment to postpone it, and that's where we are, and we've got to deal with that. Excuse me. Chairman Morris, on the amendment to the amendment, on the amendment postponed.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all that.
We can, we're speaking on the amendment to postpone the budget.
Okay, so that would be on top of my amendment?
Yes, sir, it supersedes it. Do we have any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're going to vote on the amendment to the amendment, this amendment would postpone the entire budget until 6:00 PM on July 11th. All those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Motion carries, we postpone the budget till 6:00 PM on July 11th. We go to the next, is that correct, Mr. Parliamentarian? That's correct. All right, now we go to C2, Resolution 2023 M07 for the tax levy resolution. Need a motion and a second on that. It's before us, it's properly seconded, do we have any discussion?
I don't get why we're voting on that.
Ma'am, Mariana, go ahead, ma'am.
I don't know why we would vote on that if we don't have the budget before us, how do we know we...
Excellent comments, Chairman Hunt, then what we're going to need probably is a motion to postpone, so we have a motion and a second to postpone, we can entertain that.
I'll make that motion to postpone that.
We have a motion by Chairman Morris, and it is seconded by, by Chairman DeFord, and that is to postpone the tax levy resolution until 6:00 PM on July 11th also, would that be your motion? That is correct, that is the motion to postpone the tax levy resolution till July 11th, do we have any further discussion? Motion supersedes, motion to vote on it, so we are voting to postpone, all those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Seventeen aye, thank you very much, good catches. Now we're going to zoning resolutions, we have D I, we have Resolution 2023-M-08. I believe this came to us from City of Manchester and improved through their commission and ours. Do we have any, do we have a motion and we have a second, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote, oh, Chairman Hunt? Yes, sir.
Does everybody understand what we're voting on? Rezoning property on US Highway 41, two parcels? I would like to do the D I and D I I simultaneously.
We have a motion to combine the two, as I believe they're related, and do we have a second to, to combine the two? We have a second, are we in proper format? Yes, sir, this vote is to combine the two, all those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Motion carries to combine the two, now we're going to vote on Resolution 2023 MO8 and 2023 MO9, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote, all those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Motion carries, next is zoning resolution also, D3, Resolution 2023-M-15. We have a motion and a second, it's properly before us, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote, all those in...
I'm laid on it, trying to hit the button as fast as I can, everybody, I laid a sheet, a new sheet that is a spreadsheet regarding the flow language in other counties, which there are none. This is something that's going to streamline our codes office, we, excuse me, by, by removing flow language from the residential rural areas of our county, we revert back to our standard bulk setback requirements, which puts us in line with practically every other county in the state of Tennessee. Any questions?
Further explanation by Chairman Hunt, do we have any further questions, or if not, we're prepared to vote on the resolution. All those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Resolution carries, thank you. Next is a E, is our notaries, and we have a few of them, they're on your attachment. We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote, all those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Motion carries, thank you. F are purchasing resolutions, we have five of them, we, we prepared to vote on each one. The first is Resolution 2023-M-10. We have a motion? We have a second, it's properly before us, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote, all those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Thank you, next is Resolution 2023-M-11, purchasing resolution, entertain a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, it's properly before us, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote, all those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Motion carries, next is Resolution 2023-M-12. We have a motion, we have a second, it's properly before us, do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Motion carries, next is Resolution 2023-M-13. We entertain a motion and a second on the purchasing resolution, we have a motion and a second, it's properly before us, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote, all those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Thank you, motion carries, next is Resolution 2023-M-14, entertain a purchasing resolution, we will entertain a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, it's properly before us, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote, all those in favor of Resolution 2023-M-14 signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Motion carries, thank you, that ends our business at first.
I have a quick, quick question, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, we'll recognize, Mariana.
Um, I apologize, but I just noticed the Audit Committee report is down in reports from committees that actually should be up there for a vote, just that you recognize that you received a copy of it, that's all I need.
Should we, thank you, should we vote to amend our agenda to put it back up for vote? What we need to do to do that properly, the Audit Committee report, which is, what number was that again, ma'am? Okay, yes, T, what we want to do is, we want to take line T, the Audit Committee of fiscal year 2022, we need an amendment to add it to today's agenda so we can vote on it as proper business. So we need a motion and a second to add it to the agenda, we have a motion, properly seconded, do we have any discussion? Okay, we're going to vote on the Audit Committee report being placed in the regular agenda as a, as a business item, all those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Motion carries, now we're going to vote on the Audit Committee report, which is now part of the formal agenda. Entertain a motion and a second on the audit report. We have a motion and a second, properly before us, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote, all those in favor signify by voting aye, those opposed vote no. Motion carries, thank you, Mariana. And now we'll move on to reports from committees. First is Budget and Finance Committee, Chairman Seaborn is watching us from the West Coast on business, but Chairman Hunt, I know, I know the minutes are in the, in the package, do you have any additional discussions? Do you have any additional discussions?
Yeah, I don't think I've got anything to add to that.
Okay, we will, I'm sure we'll be putting out notice for some additional Budget and Finance meetings pretty quick. Maybe before we move on, what do you think about suspending the rules all this together so that we can call Budget and Finance in less than seven days and let them do their work? Okay, there's no trickery here. We just want to, this is facts. We need, in order for the Budget and Finance Committee to meet regularly, according to our rules, we want them to meet quicker than seven days each time, obviously, between now and July 11th. We want them to meet as much as they need to meet. Is that, so I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules, which takes 13 votes, simply to empower the Budget and Finance Committee to meet as often as needed until, okay, we have a motion, it's properly seconded. Let's get it up on the board. Do we have, we'll discuss it if anybody has any discussion. This is just, we have a seven-day rule. We try everything we can to stick to. This allows us not to have to do that. Budget and Finance can meet as often as needed. It's just, okay, it passes 17, is that the vote? We don't have it up yet.
We got to wait two days. I make a motion to suspend.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Before we vote, I've been just advised that the comptrollers issued new rules that we have to give two days' notice, no matter what. So we can only meet every two days legally now, but we can meet as often as we can every two days, between now and whenever we want to. Those are new rules laid down by the comptroller. So do we have?
I can't wait to make a motion to suspend.
Okay. Just, we're voting to suspend the rules so Budget and Finance Committee can meet as often as possible. That's what we're doing, and we'll sort out any rules later, make sure we do it right. We have a motion and a second. Takes a supermajority of 13 to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Carries, so Budget and Finance. Thank you, Chairman Hunt. And do you have any additional comments on the Budget Committee? For now, we'll be working with you to set a meeting.
Yeah, I can't wait to meet every day or two.
Yeah. I think the chairman's gone until July 2nd, so we're going to go pretty quick. Next is Health, Welfare, and Recreation. Chairman Honesworth.
Yes, we didn't meet this month, but Saturday, July 29th, we'll be having Paul Hogan's, ex-commissioner Paul Hogan's dedication ceremony at Hickerson Stations. All the commissioners are invited to attend that.
Thank you, Chairman Honesworth, and we hope to be there. He's a great man. Law enforcement had a special called meeting. Chairman DeFord.
Last week, we had a special called meeting to appoint a new judicial commissioner. Our next meeting will be in September.
Great, thank you. And we voted on that new commissioner this evening, and he's coming on board. Beer Board registers no activity. Capital Outlay, Chairman Hunt.
Nothing to report with Capital Outlay.
Thank you. Policies and Procedures, Chairman Hirschman.
Only thing I'd like to say, I appreciate everybody voting for the personnel manual things that we've changed.
You've done a lot of work on that.
Has been a lot of work done.
A lot of work.
I want to thank all the people that's on that policy and procedure team. They did a good job on it.
Thank you. Industrial Board, Chairman Crook's here, but all's good. He's doing a fantastic job, and he's been showing folks in Coffin County quite a bit from around the world. We appreciate him. Strategic planning, Chairman Seaborn's gone. Chairman Morris.
We are in the early stages of starting to put all the data we've collected together and start working on the first draft on the county strategic plan. I think after we get through the budget issues in the next two or three weeks, we'll resume meeting and start putting that plan together.
Thank you very much. Next is Planning Commission, Chairman Hunt.
You guys see the date on that, 6/27? I actually had a meeting before this meeting. We were addressing one item, cellphone tower site plan. Our zoning resolution requires any cellphone tower setback, just like we talked about home setbacks today. The tower setback, if a tower is 250 feet tall, it has to be 250 feet from the parcel line. This tower did not meet that minimum requirement, so we denied the request, and that was the only thing we had on the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Hunt. Next is BZA, Board of Zoning Appeals. Chairman Hunt.
We had a zoning setback variance. Some points along the way, people just can't meet the setbacks. This one was out at Lakewood Park, where everybody knows that the lot sizes are out there ridiculously small, and the guy was denied his setback variance request because he had not obtained his septic permit through the state of Tennessee. Septic permits are issued based on, they allow bedrooms. They don't count bathrooms. They count the bedrooms in a home. So there was no way we could issue a setback when the guy didn't even know how big a home he could build. So that request was denied.
Thank you, Chairman. Next is Purchasing Property Sales Committee. Chairman Honesworth.
Yes, we haven't met since the last commission, but we've got, July is going to be busy. We've got a lot of stuff coming up, and be advised, July 8th, the sale will be final on the Health Department on Park Street, so keep that in mind.
Thank you, sir. And I know you're working on some other things, too, quite a few. Always a busy committee now. Ambulance Authority, Chairman Stubblefield.
Yes, we met a couple of weeks ago. Nothing to report.
Thank you.
Read the minutes.
Exit 105 Joint Committee, no activity. Investment Committee, no activity. Solid Waste Sanitation Board says no activity, but Chairman Hunt, do you have anything you'd like to say? Legislative Committee, Chairman Morris.
We have not scheduled a next meeting. Waiting on to see if we have anything for to review. I've talked to Policies and Procedures. They may have one item, but we may wait to get a few other items before we meet. So as soon as we have some items, we'll call a meeting.
Thank you, sir. Rural Roads and Bridges, no activity. IT Committee, no activity. 911 Board, Chairman Stubblefield.
Nothing to report. Met last week. You can review the minutes if you want to.
Yeah, thank you. I think you, you did revert some money back to the general fund, too. Yes, we did, somewhere around $43,000 total. It was a little bit. It's, you sent some back. Thank you.
That's not helpful.
No, it's not helpful. Okay, we'll discuss it later. That was, I was just talking about, okay. Thank you. It's not helpful. Audit Committee, we're to deal with. EMA Homeland Security, we have nothing to report. Wayside Wastewater Authority, those guys are still working hard. They're, they're trying to come up with some, some more formulas for trying to reduce the tap fees that neighborhood's paying and extend the life of that system, and they're doing a great job. Library Board, nothing to report, no activity. Election Commission, no activity. County Board of Equalization, reports no activity. Next, we move to number 13, Statements and Announcements. The next meeting will be July 11th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Be looking for, checking your emails, checking your texts, looking for special called budget meetings, and I encourage everybody to come. And it is my hope that we can continue to operate in that meeting just like we did tonight. You guys, everybody did great. There's nothing we can't do, and everybody, as long as I'm sitting up here, is going to get a fair opportunity to speak and run their motions. And I want, I hope the rest of the committees will continue to be that way. We will work through this, and we'll move on. So I appreciate you very much. And do we have any additional announcements? Seeing none, I sense an urge to adjourn. Before I do, though, I want to check with the Parliamentarian just to make sure that we are zipped up tightly for the meeting. He says we're good to go. I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and on debate, we are adjourned.